I call to order the regular meeting of the City Commission this Monday, August 26, 2019. Please stay in for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Clerk, has the roll been taken?
It has, all are present tonight except for Vice Mayor Gillis and Commissioner Lalone, who are both absent tonight.
Tonight, we have a departmental presentation by Street Superintendent Matt Weaver.
Welcome back, Matt.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. I'll just give you a brief presentation of the Street Department and Motor Pool in the Department of Public Works. We are a staff of ten positions in the Street Department. One's vacant right now. I will be filling that shortly. And then one position in the Motor Pool Department is our mechanic. Little overview, the Street Department works with the city government and other city departments to maintain the current and the future city infrastructure. We maintain seventy-six miles of streets, one hundred and forty miles of storm and sanitary sewer, assist in the upkeep of the downtown area, banners, Christmas wreaths in the winter, et cetera, among other things, assist in the maintenance of the airport, help out engineering water and wastewater projects, and assist public safety with any needs police and fire may have for us. We also do street sweeping. We take care of doing the sweeping in the spring and summer months in the city limits. We also maintain six miles of street sweeping for MDOT, which is the business corridor of 127 and M20, and we also maintain all street signs on designated city streets. As I said before, we also maintain and repair the storms and sanitary sewer systems. We also handle all the mist dig requests for underground utilities within the city right away. Tree planting is something we do every spring, as most of you know. We plant between seventy-five and one hundred new trees each year, and we also handle tree removal, brush removal, and the Christmas tree pickup in January. Leaf pickup begins in late October, and the final pickup is in November. They're picked up on an every-other-week basis, and we average around nine thousand yards of leaves in the last three years. That's been our average. Snow and ice control, we handle all that for the city, and it takes the street team of ten employees a minimum of fifteen to eighteen hours to remove snow from all the city streets. Six hours if we were just to salt the streets and plow approximately twenty-five miles of sidewalk for the city walking route. Motor Pool maintains, repairs all vehicles and equipment that the city owns, and also helps in the decision-making process in regards to replacement of that equipment. Any questions? Yes, sir.
My interest, you said you plant between seventy-five and one hundred new trees every year. How many diseased, hit by a car, how many trees do we lose a year on an average?
On average, probably maybe in the fifteen to twenty range.
Okay, so we're making good progress on it.
Yeah. Yeah, it depends sometimes with those smaller trees. From after the ash bore went through, we haven't had anything of that significance since, so about fifteen to twenty trees. Any other questions? Thanks, everyone.
Thank you, Mr. Weaver. Next on our, well, we don't have any more. Do we have any additions or deletions to our agenda tonight? Okay, seeing none, I will open our first public input section. If you'd like to make a public comment, please come to the podium, state your name and your address, and you'll have five minutes.
Michael Castrava, 1211 East Chippewa, and I'm a, thank you, Mayor Joseph, and all of you for letting me butt in here for about one minute, and I think it's a feel-good minute for you because I was involved in that recent, two, three weeks ago, that Al Qaeda Exchange Program. Seven high school girls were here, and one of the things that I was involved in is taking the kids all around Mount Pleasant, thirteen bikers, and for two and a half hours on a beautiful day, we went all over this town. We visited the parks, my hats off to the Parks and Rec Association, or the Parks and Rec Department, my hats off to the Main Street Department, our city, and you know me, I'm not that complimentary, our city was beautiful, beautiful, beautiful. So I just, we have a reason to be an advocate for our city. I never realized, taking these kids around, that our city, our city was clean, the houses, the parks, I saw nothing about it that I didn't say, jeez, in fact, I'm happy that I live here. Thanks for everything.
Thank you, Mike. Anyone else who would like to give a public comment tonight?
Mr. Mayor, could we see if we can get a few more of those in the future?
Hard to follow, Mike Castrava. Seeing none, I will close the public comment section. Receipt of petitions and communications, Manager Ridley, would you like to?
Yes, you have a number of items on this section of your agenda tonight. You have the ongoing report on pending items, and attached to that this month is the monthly report on police-related citizen complaints that have been received, as well as a summary of the information that was shared with some of you when we had the meeting with the city assessor, Chris Cookie, to talk about questions that were raised on the downtown sales study. You also have the July minutes of the Airport Advisory Board, the June minutes of the Brownfield Redevelopment Economic Development Corporation. Unfortunately, you have a resignation of Lori Erwin from the Parks and Recreation Commission, a notice of a temporary traffic control order, and this is for installation of four-way stop signs at the intersection of Hopkins and Washington on CMU's campus. That will be in place for ninety days as a temporary order, and then will come to you for final consideration. Then you received correspondence from Deborah Carey regarding adult-use recreational marijuana establishments, and a communication from Laura Cochran, who lives on High Street, regarding her concerns with an accident that occurred on High Street. And then tonight on the dais, you have a communication from Mandy Garmo on behalf of 3967 Euclid, again regarding the licensing of provisioning centers, and I will follow up with Ms. Garmo to make sure she understands that what we're looking to in the proposed ordinance is for recreational retailers, that, I'll clarify, that we're not looking at changing the number of marijuana provisioning centers that would be licensed, and make sure that that group understands that on your behalf.
Next, we have the consent calendar items. Are there any items on the agenda that need to be removed from the consent calendar? Seeing none, Manager Ridley, would you like to walk us through?
Yes, we're suggesting that you approve the minutes of both the regular meeting and the closed session that took place on August 12th. In your packet, there is a standard resolution to recognize the Isabella Community Soup Kitchen as a nonprofit entity in our community. The Soup Kitchen Board intends to hold a, to sell raffle tickets later this month as part of fundraising, and the Gaming Division of the state requires that they have on file a resolution from the local governing board recognizing that group as a nonprofit entity in our community, so we're recommending approval of the standard resolution. And then in your packet is also an amended resolution for the Economic Development Administration Grant that we have applied for to expand the detention pond in Industrial Park South. This came to you in June for approval before we submitted the grant, and as we've moved through the review stages with the EDA for the grant, they've asked that the resolution be modified for two reasons. One is that the grant requires a twenty percent match on behalf of the grant recipient, and our prior resolution said that the city would be providing ten percent, and the property owners would be providing ten percent, but since the grant will actually come to the city, the EDA is looking for a commitment on behalf of the city for the full twenty percent in that resolution, so we've changed the wording to indicate that. And we have, I would say, attestations from each of the property owners indicating they plan to help contribute toward that grant, and I know Commissioner Gillis, when she called me tonight to say she would not be able to attend tonight, indicated she was concerned about our ability to collect that ten percent from the property owners, and I think we have a couple of options with that. We could either ask the property owners to give us the funds, and we could hold it in escrow until we receive note of the award of the grant, or once we're notified of the award, that at that point in time, we could ask the property owners to front the money to us to make sure we have it on hand in order to have it before we accept the grant. So I think there's a couple of ways to address that concern, and then...
Could we special assess them also if push came to shove?
We probably could. It would be a much lengthier process, but that would be an option if we were, if we had difficulty collecting it. And then the other change in the resolution is to make it clear that Michelle Sponseller is, has the authority to submit the grant because she holds our, sign onto our online portal for that, so it's just easier to make it clear she's doing that instead of me having to get an online signature. So we're recommending you approve the resolution, and if you have the concerns about the ten percent from the property owners, let me know, and we can start working with those property owners to find the best way to collect those funds. And then the last item is the approval of payrolls and warrants and the consent calendar.
Commissioner Kulik.
Move to approve the consent calendar as presented.
Commissioner Perschbacher.
Second.
Any discussion? Commissioner Kulik.
I really don't have any reason to doubt that the property owners out there are going to try to stiff us on their ten percent commitment, and if they do, we can special assess, and so I will be voting on the whole packet yes.
I just wanted to give a little shout-out to the Soup Kitchen. There's a nice article today in today's paper, in the Morning Sun, about how they're doing a lot of renovations and seeing a growing number of people utilizing their services, and so thankful for their contribution to our community. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the consent calendar, please vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, and those opposed, the same. That motion passes unanimously. Next on our agenda is a public hearing. It's a public hearing for an amendment to Chapter 30, subsection 30.04, regarding the addition and deletion of agenda items, and consider approval of the same. I will open this public hearing. Manager Ridley, would you like to introduce the topic?
Yes, this charter, or this ordinance amendment would change the number of votes that would be needed if you were looking to add or delete either a work session or a closed session to the already-published agenda. Changes were made to this chapter last year, and as the Charter Committee reviewed it, they thought this might be a good change to improve the process, and so all other items would still require a two-thirds vote to add or delete from the agenda, but those two items, since they're typically not action items, would only require a simple majority. So after holding the public hearing, we're recommending you approve the ordinance amendment as drafted.
Okay. I will now open the public hearing. If you'd like to make comment on this, please come to the podium, state your name and your address, and you'll have five minutes to address the commission. Seeing no one coming forward, I will now close the public comment, or the public hearing. Commissioner Kulik.
Move to approve the ordinance amendment to Section 30.04A as presented.
Commissioner Ling.
Second.
Any discussion? Commissioner Kulik.
I think this is a good compromise. I was not in favor of the ordinance amendment a year ago. It came back and bid us earlier this year when we, when I tried to add a, we'd gotten a communication from the attorney earlier in the week and tried to add a closed session, and there weren't, there were commissioners absent, and that didn't pass. People need to realize that closed sessions and work sessions, the commission cannot take any action at those, so it's irrelevant that it's been advertised in advance, so I will be supporting this.
Commissioner Ling.
I would just add my agreement to that. I was a strong supporter of the amendment that we made last year because I think public notice is important before we take action, but as Commissioner Kulik pointed out, it became clear that there probably needed to be an exception made, and the important part of that, from my perspective, is there are items on which we would not be taking action, and therefore, they don't really undermine the primary purpose for that amendment, so I'm also supportive of it.
I agree with my fellow commissioners that this amendment is for, for us, because the closed sessions and the work sessions, although we don't take official action, they really do drive the future work at the commission, and so sometimes when we have issues that come up on a, you know, sort of surprise, we have to, you know, potentially at least talk about them and set up for action in the future, and so this allows us to do that as well as upholds our commitment to transparency and for the public and our agenda items, so... Any other public comment? Or discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please vote by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, the same?
Aye.
So that motion passes four to one. Next on our agenda is item number thirteen, which is to consider a resolution supporting fee recommendations for the neighborhood enterprise zone and the commercial redevelopment district.
As you know, we're in the process of creating two districts that would allow for the property owner within the district to apply for tax abatements, and generally, we discuss fees and charges as part of the budget process, but we've never had fees for these two type of tax abatement requests in the city, so we thought it was important to get some fees approved before those applications are submitted yet this year. So we're recommending you set a fee for applications within the district of $375 for each application, and this $375 follows our fee policy guidelines in that it covers our publication costs for the application and the estimated staff time to process the application, so we recommend you approve the resolution to set both of those fees.
Commissioner Kulik.
Move to approve the resolution establishing the application fees for the neighborhood enterprise zone and commercial redevelopment districts as presented.
Commissioner Ling.
Support.
Any discussion? Commissioner Kulik.
I realize that this, since this is the first one, this is a shot in the dark somewhat, however, Mary Ann's one of the best dark shooters out there as far as estimating what costs are going to be involved, so I will be supporting this.
Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, and those opposed, the same?
Aye.
So that motion passes four to one. Next on our agenda is item number fourteen, which is to introduce an ordinance to amend Chapter 115 entitled Recreational Marijuana Establishments, and Title XI of the Mount Pleasant City Code to allow certain establishments to be operated in accordance with state law, and to set a public hearing for September 9th, 2019. Manager Ridley?
Yes, if the commission doesn't mind, I will cover my comments for both item fourteen and fifteen on the agenda since they're related, although you have to take separate action on both of them. But when the state regulations for recreational marijuana establishments were issued on July 3rd, since that time, we've had, as you know, we've had three lengthy work session discussions on the drafting of the ordinances for this matter to allow the city to opt in to allowing the establishments in the city. As you know, the regulations for recreational establishments are, ended up being quite a bit different than some of the regulations for medical facilities, and so that's part of why it took us a while to get through what these draft ordinances would look like, and we tried to craft the ordinances as similar to the medical ordinances as possible, knowing the amount of time we had spent researching those. So the draft ordinance for the regulatory part of the introduction is in your packet tonight and includes the general direction that we think we heard during those work session discussions, and if you don't mind, I'd like to hit a few of the highlights of that ordinance for the public that's watching so that they have some overview of it before you hopefully hold the public hearing on it on September 9th, which is what we're recommending tonight. So the regulatory ordinance, in summary, it's a lengthy ordinance, but the high points of it, I believe, is that it would establish the process, it would establish that processing centers, compliance testing, and transport services would be allowed in industrial districts in the city, and there would be no limit on the number of establishments that we would allow, similar to what we did with medical facilities. Grow operations would be allowed in the city's industrial districts and would be limited in number, just like they were under medical marijuana, in that we would allow five Class A grow operations and three Class B or Class C grow operations. Recreational retailers would be allowed in our districts of the Mission Picker DDA and the Downtown Tifa, and would be limited to three, which again is the same number as the marijuana provisioning centers. A retailer could be co-located in an industrial district if they were part of a grow or processing operation. The state regulations also included five additional license types for recreational marijuana that were not part of the medical marijuana licensing, and so this ordinance for recreational marijuana would regulate them as follows. The temporary event organizers, we would leave the processing of those applications at the state level and would not weigh in on the organizers for temporary events. Temporary events would be considered for licensing in the city, subject to various limitations, and one of those limitations, as outlined in the ordinance, is that it would be limited to edible-type products. The excess growers would not be allowed in the city because, quite frankly, they're not needed based on the number of grow licenses that we have in the ordinance. Microbusiness, which is a new type of business that grows, processes, and sells its own product, would be limited to two within the city and could be in the same two commercial districts previously mentioned and in the industrial zones. The designated consumption establishments would not be allowed in the city, and in all cases, for all of those establishments I mentioned, they would be required to obtain city and state approval, require, or obtain a special use permit through the Planning Commission, and would not be able to be located within a thousand feet of a K through twelve school, which is consistent with the state regulations, but they also would not be allowed to be located within five hundred feet of CMU's main campus unless it's on the east side of Mission, and again, those are the same limitations we had for medical marijuana. The ordinance outlines the criteria that will be used in evaluating the applications that are received for those types of facilities that we've limited the number, and as you know, we're having a work session discussion on that criteria this evening, so a part of that may be adjusted before your public hearing. And it calls for a complete review of the ordinance after one year, so in December of 2020, we would be reviewing all of the recreational ordinances as well. So what we're recommending tonight is that you set a public hearing on this proposed regulatory ordinance for September 9th so that you can obtain public input into the proposed ordinance, and then the separate agenda item is for you to pass a resolution that refers the zoning ordinance part to the Planning Commission for their review, public hearing, and then referral back to you. So as I indicated, those are two separate agenda items, but those comments cover the majority of what's covered in both of those.
Commissioner Kulik.
Move to set the public hearing for September 9th, 2019, on Chapter 115, Recreational Marijuana Establishments as presented.
Commissioner Perschbacher.
Second.
Commissioner Ling.
The only thing I'd like to say on this is, I'm really hoping that we will get some public comment on this. This is a whole new area. The ordinance in Michigan that was approved in 2018 has some similarities but some differences from both the medical marijuana ordinance that we have in our state and the recreational ordinances that exist in other states. So in some cases, we are in fact dealing with establishments such as the microbusiness or the consumption center that we really haven't had any experience with as a state, and so I know that the commission really is interested in hearing any comments that people have about this proposed ordinance.
Any other discussion? All those in favor of setting the public hearing for September 9th, please vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, and those opposed, the same? That motion passes unanimously. Item number fifteen is consider the resolution for referral to the Planning Commission to introduce an ordinance and add a new subsection 154.410.b4.b, and to amend the Mount Pleasant zoning ordinance to regulate marijuana establishments as special uses. Commissioner Kulik.
Move to approve the resolution as presented to formally refer the proposed zoning ordinance to the Planning Commission for action.
Commissioner Perschbacher.
Second.
All those in favor, please vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, and those opposed, the same? The motion is unanimous. Item number seventeen is to consider a closed session pursuant to subsection 8C of the Open Meetings Act for strategy and negotiation session with negotiation with collective bargaining agreement. Commissioner Kulik.
So moved.
Commissioner Perschbacher.
Second.
Jeremy, would you like to take the vote?
Commissioner Tolles.
Yes.
Commissioner Perschbacher.
Yes.
Commissioner Ling.
Yes.
Commissioner Lalone is absent. Commissioner Kulik.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gillis is absent. Mayor Joseph.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Item number eighteen is to consider appointments as recommended by the Appointments Committee for, we have two, I'm the only commissioner from the Appointments Committee here today, so I will introduce those, I suppose. We have two appointments. We have one for the Historic Commission, Historic District Commission, Jonathan Corpey with a partial term to expire December 31st, 2020, and Brian Sponseller for the Parks and Recreation Commission for a term to expire December 31st, 2020. Commissioner Kulik.
Move to approve the appointments as recommended by the Appointments Committee.
Commissioner Tolles.
Support.
Any discussion? All those in favor of supporting the appointments, please vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, and those opposed, the same? I'd like to thank those people for their service to our community. Item number, sorry. Item number nineteen, we already took care of, so... Do we have any announcements on city-related issues or new business? Commissioner Kulik.
Could we get a thumbnail summary from the chief as to how things went on Welcome Weekend?
I think he was planning to do that.
I think he's ready.
I must be psycho.
I am. As this board knows and city knows, five years ago, we put together a plan to address and improve the quality of life issues in the neighborhood north of campus. We knew that it would take several years to see significant change and improvement. I'm pleased to say that for the second year in a row, we have seen continued progress and improvement this past weekend in adhering to the community standards that we set forth five years ago. With that said, we will now go into a mode of consistently enforcing those community standards throughout the rest of the academic year. I also wanted to point out that all the credit should go to the great administrative team that I have at the Police and Fire Departments, especially with Captain Lay... team that I have at the Police and Fire Departments, especially with Captain Latham, Lieutenant Saitzma, and Kristi Dush, and the dedicated officers at each of those departments that carry out this plan every day. In addition, and like I have said many times before, I know it's expensive, but the pedestrian street lighting continues to be a contributing factor to our success and also adds an element of safety to the area that you can't put a price tag on. So, I certainly do appreciate that aspect, so. Any other specific questions?
The cooperation from CMU these past five years has been very noticeable also, and a shout out of support to them.
Yes, absolutely. And, and again, the surrounding counties, Midland, Grashit, the City of Alma, City of Midland have all contributed, Michigan State Police, so we've been very fortunate.
Yes, Ling?
I'd also like to mention that the, the Student Government Association has also been very cooperative, and the group that was put together, the City Student Liaison Committee, that included representatives from the neighborhoods who've worked together on strategies to be able to deal with this problem that was beginning to develop into a serious problem. So, it was great to read the reports on how this weekend went, and congratulations to your department and to all those who have helped.
Yeah, absolutely. I don't know what her last name is. I'm sorry, but Mr. Holtgrave has a young lady working under her name by the name of Molly who works with the fraternities and sororities. She is awesome. She delivers a message, she follows up on it, she's been instrumental too, so I would, I wouldn't do it justice without thanking her as well, so.
Commissioner Tolles?
Chief Loria, can you tell me what the excess cost is for the weekend cost of ballpark?
I, I don't have that information right in front of me. When you talk about excess costs, you're talking about for the city?
Yes, extra overtime, extra officers.
Yeah, I would have to get back to you on that.
Director, thank you so much, and to your, your staff and our community partners. It's always a good feeling when you see people in the community thanking not only your staff, but the students for upholding our community standards, and I think everyone is happy at the end of the day when less people are in the hospital or in jail, so thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, if I may, we also received a letter today from the President of the Washington Area Neighborhood Association, and it was addressed to myself and Director Loria, but I thought you would be interested in hearing it. And he also wrote a letter to the editor for CM Life as well, but this one was directed to the city, and it says, "On behalf of the people of the Washington Area Neighborhood Association, I'd like to thank the city of Mount Pleasant for their hard work making Welcome Weekend a quiet, uneventful time. The feedback I've received since Sunday morning has been unanimously positive, and we create, credit a significant amount of that to the city's attention to addressing what in the past hasn't always been orderly and respectful. I'd also like to express our gratitude to the officers from the contributing agencies who helped everyone get moved and settled in safely. We realize it was a long weekend for our local law enforcement, and this meant sacrificing time on what was a great weekend. Please also take this as my invitation to share this with any and all city employees who played a role. We are grateful for the success the city has had in addressing what was for many of our members a source of considerable stress, so the neighborhood is appreciative as well."
Any other announcements, new business? I just wanted to make a couple of announcements. We received an email from our city manager Ridley this past week that MEDC and the Michigan Municipal League are offering technical assistance at the 200 East Broadway, which is the old Isabella Bank property, and that's where Mid-Michigan Development Corporation is now housed. And they're, they're helping with marketing, and that's a result of our redevelopment-ready certification, and that's just one of the, you know, benefits that we're going to reap now and in the future by the efforts that the city has made over the last few years to make ourselves more marketable and more transparent and easier for us to spur economic development in our community. Staff is also meeting with Consumers Energy for adjustment of our rates, especially at our water and wastewater department, and we might see a savings of $25,000, which I, I have to credit our staff and community partners with just to cut down on our, our bills and our contribution to using up energy. Also, our police will be participating in a pilot program with the state for oral fluid tests for, to determine, Paul, correct me if I'm wrong, is it drug levels and is it alcohol as well?
We already have a method for the, the alcohol, obviously. The, the drugs and impairment from them is a little bit more scientific, and this is a program that starts to address those by collecting information, vetting it through the court process. And we were selected as a municipality or as a city due to the fact that we have a drug recognition expert already, and, you know, he will be testing it out, so. Yes, short answer is yes, it is for drugs.
Commissioner Kulik.
It just struck me, a few years ago, there was an ordinance passed that people weren't going to be arrested under a city ordinance for having a minimal amount of marijuana in their possession, correct?
I think that, I don't remember the particulars.
Well, the particulars don't, the, the only thing is, would you look at that and see if there's a conflict with what we did a few years ago now that recreational marijuana is legal and people may have a, a larger volume in their possession?
Certainly, we can look at that, but I don't believe there's a conflict.
I hope not.
Yeah, I appreciate it.
And I would just like to welcome our students back. Today was the first day of class, so good luck to them in their academic year. Any other announcements? Seeing none, we'll open up our second public comment section on any city-related business. Seeing no one come forward, I will close the public comment section. We'll now recess upstairs in Conference Room A for our work session on recreational marijuana competitive process applications.
Which is coming first, the work session or the closed session?
We have the work session on our...
We approve the closed session, okay.
Right, yep.
But the agenda has the work session.
Okay, okay, I see, yep, thank you.
Yep. Public is welcome to our work.